The different classes and you know, I don't draw FTE, y'all don't draw FTE. None of the school administrators draw FTE. The students, those teachers draw with those kids in there. So you have to kind of make it, make it go as far as you can, obviously. And that's the, the, the challenge of budgets every year. What, what, what I'm proposing, and this is the only change, because we originally approved this at the last board meeting on the eighth, is the student who is the, the homeschool student or the PEP, PEP scholarship recipient, who takes that FTE with them, if they want to come back and play, if they want to come back and play a sport with us or take a class, that we can charge that to the money that they got, that scholarship. This is, this is legal and so we want to be able to, to start doing that. School districts now are starting to put this in place. It, it's very hard, Mason and I were talking before the meeting. It's very difficult to quantify, you know, dollar for dollar, you know, what, what that actual cost is. We wanted to be fair, but one thing we did know is for the, if you look on page, this is on page 108 of the student progression plan, we put down their academic course fees of $285 a course for a semester, or five, if it's a, a year-long course, it'd be $570. That's what Florida Virtual charges us. If we have a student who takes a Florida Virtual course, that's what we pay them. So we felt like dollar for dollar, that was a fair ask to do that. If you're a traditional homeschool student, you don't pay any academic fees because they're doing their academic stuff at home. We're not charging them, they're not getting scholarships for that. These PEP students do get their FTE with them. Extracurricular fees, you know, we got to talking about, you know, a kid that comes, they're, they're on the scholarship, but they come play ball. They play all these sports and, and again, that FTE pays a lot of everything. Insurance, uniforms, the coaching supplements, field maintenance, lights, electricity, utilities. All those things get pulled from, from a student's FTE. So we come up with $250 a semester, $500 for the year. And it's paid once, once they make the team. They can come try out, if they don't make the team, then they don't pay that. If there's, if there's any injuries during tryouts, the families will be responsible for that. But it would cover their school day insurance and any applicable cost, you know, for that. So that, we felt like that was a good starting point to cover that. Right now, you know, without this, this change in there, a homeschool student or a PEP scholarship, or you know, they, they, really anybody comes and they play ball over here and they blow their knee out, we're on the hook for all of that, you know? So at least that gives us a little bit of charging, and, and again, we, we're, we're charging the scholarship. Parents pay it and then they get reimbursed, okay? Now, this has been abused in some situations. I'm, I'm already hearing the abuse of it where a family, you know, buys a big screen TV and it's a computer monitor, you know? And so they're gonna have, Step Up's gonna have to do their own governing and auditing, and I'm sure you'll see that. There's been some, some students taking judo lessons and they're calling it PE. And some of that's not allowed. There are some real strict guidelines and people are testing the boundaries of that. Is this NDP taking Disney trips and calling it a field trip and an enrichment trip? I don't know, we, you know, obviously we're not involved in all of that, but what we do want to do is cover our cost. We want to make sure that we're covering some costs. And so I think this is a very small price to pay. Again, the, the parents not, it's part of their scholarship that they've, that they have now. And I think it's a very, very minimal amount, $250 for the semester, $500 for the year, and then the, and then the course fees.
How did you come up with that cost? Just something that other districts do or?
It's hard to quantify.
Understand.
We caught with the other, the other districts and, and this is, this is about the going rate that we're seeing. Walt, us and Walton are the only ones who have started this. I promise you, every school district in the state wants to do it. It can become very political, you know, when you start charging these PEP scholarships. And to me, this has nothing to do with politics, it has everything to do with us being able to recoup some money from these people who are enjoying our, our, you know, the stuff that belongs to taxpayer, but getting all of that at no cost to them.
That's the fault of that.
Mm-hmm. They're well beyond that price.
Yeah, I just didn't, you know, from a standpoint, you always just arbitrarily, you know, come up with that, that amount and.
Very low. We really only looked at cost of your coaches because that's something we know, like, coaches' cost, that's kind of really what we base this on. So people, honestly, what we are paying out is at least double. But we wanted to start somewhere, probably be on the.
That's what I was gonna ask.
I think so.
This is subject to change then.
Yeah, you know, we, we waited a long time to get feedback before we tucked this in. The part about parents being responsible, that was our attorneys who had that. Questions on what if this and what if this, and I know there's gonna be things that we've not. So by far a work in progress and I think probably will be higher.
So, so it sounds like you, you looked at the insurance cost, calculated some of those, looked at utilities, calculated some of those, looked at coaching, looked at field, and then went where they fee way under what you knew it was as a starving point. Correct. So we're confident that, that the cost per student is way higher than this and that we're way under those, looking at all the costs that are associated with every program, even the least affordable programs and the most affordable programs. We feel like this is a good. I don't want to make, I don't want to make it cost prohibitive where they say, well, that, boy, that eats up my PEP scholar. It's not, it's not. I think this is a good starting point because it's similar to what Walton's doing. And then the other, a lot of other districts are even higher, but I think it's a good, it's a good point to start and we'll see where it goes. I don't, I don't want to raise it to the point where it's not affordable or it, or it actually interferes with the rest of the things they want to do with their scholarship. But we've got to cover cost here. This is a business move. We got to cover the cost of what we got here. Somebody's coming and enjoying the benefits of the school district without paying some of the costs. And here's the deal, they're not paying it, the, the state is paying, giving them that FTE money through that scholarship. So it's, 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 it's one of those things that is, to me, is just more than fair.
So we have 25 students on PIP scholarships. That, I mean, it could come to a cost, I mean, you're talking $8,000 something dollars a student for FTE.
Right.
It's already a substantial loss and you're only looking, I, I think this is very low.
Yeah.
Very, very low.
You take a student plays multiple sports, I just asked her, that $500 won't cover, cover their fuel and cost of the bus?
Yeah, I know, it's.
If they play multiple sports.
And it's just the FEFP students?
Not our student that we are not.
How many, how many are we looking at right now?
That's a good question. How many are there? Over the last couple of years, not doing this, as far as homeschool school students, I'd say.
Total.
Yeah, maybe.
Off the top of my head, I can't think of any. Most everyone that was homeschooled before applied for PEP scholarships at this. Don't think that we have very many traditional. By you would just homeschool and not.
So what, so what does it mean by, and so this fee is paid once the student makes the extracurricular team and covers all athletics, school day insurance and applicable costs covered by FEFP for LCSB students. So that, that's, it's not saying just FE, it's not just saying FEFP, it's for any person that is not enrolled in the school. They're gonna pay that $250, correct? So how, how does weightlifting work? Say if you play football or baseball or something like that and you're required to go to weightlifting, how does that work associated with this?
You're talking about?
I mean, is that, is that considered an academic yet? Well, right, if they're required to come to weightlifting and then play football after, is weightlifting considered academic?
So that would be covered.
It's a class that's generated.
At $570.
You're talking about like summer workouts, weightlifting or?
Well, that's actually a different question I had. So summer is different than in school. So if you're in school weightlifting, so then that's a class at the academic course cost of the $285 associated with that semester. So it'd be $285 for weightlifting, then you'd pay the extracurricular semester. So basically for half the year, you're gonna be $535 to be, well, no, no more, yeah, right at that. $535 to be able to play that sport if it's requiring weightlifting, right? Okay, and then the other question, the summer, so I see we're August, December and January to May, what about June, July? So if you're in.
As well as preseason conditioning.
Oh, is that what it's, oh, okay. So that, that's part of that then, so preseason conditions, say you go play football.
Or anybody that.
Or, yeah.
That would cover that.
So that'd be like a half, that'd be considered half a year, weights and might be like a semester.
We couldn't break summer out separate, so we.
I got you.
Oh, in favor of say a?
Right.
Any pooh? Moving on, Adam G. Need a motion to, to create and advertise 21st CCLC positions. Have a motion?
Motion.
Jody's second.
Second.
Keever, any discussion? All in favor of say a?
No.
Those, motion carried. Next board member concerned, Mr. Keever?
First off, I guess the topic of the first meeting, Ms. Katie, thank you for getting all the budget together. I, I know it's a lot and I appreciate everybody that helped her and sent her the information she needed to get, get what she needed together. But thank you very, very much for that. Everybody's hard work, I appreciate it. I know that there's a ton that y'all do that goes on behind the scenes. I see it more being here now, so I sincerely appreciate you and your time. Looking forward to the kids coming back to school. I think it's a pretty exciting time. I'm gonna look forward to seeing them. I appreciate the roof going on, the, the old concession at the field. I think that new metal roof looks great. Thank you for, for handling that, Kevin, I appreciate that, it looks real good out there. Leslie Lawson and Zach, they have offered their time and dollars to paint Bulldog Country on the block. While the football field looks great, they're not finished yet, but it's, it's gonna look real good. I'm excited to see the field house finished up here real soon. Do we have any update on the softball bleachers or is that kind of where?
So, Mr. Singletary, he's not here and I talked to him, he told me to explain it, y'all. So he taught, talked to Mr. Petty about it. It's way more than what we got in our budget, so they stopped all process on it because it was gonna be way more. So our next option is, you know, two from there.
So maybe a redesign?
A quarter million dollars.
So it, maybe it's a redesign out at the complex as far as how the seating is gonna work out, the way things are gonna look?
Right, you know, the other option, I, I've looked at it far as trying to get higher bleachers like at the football field. Nobody wants to make them. Maybe we settle putting them on the concession stand, build a platform over there that ain't near as expensive and take as much area and I'll put some there and raise them up.
You could just about bury your dugouts or you can look over them cheaper and you can put a set of bleachers up. So, all right, well, I appreciate that, thank you. Also, another thing, Kyle, I appreciate you reaching out to the county pertaining to EMS on the sideline of football games. It sounds like they're, they're discussing things on that side to see what they may be able to assist with. So thank you for communicating that, that with them. Other than that, nothing offhand per se, anything else. So thank y'all very much for everything you do. It's a pleasure to be working with y'all.
Ms. Jody?
Football field house, July 31st, are we gonna meet that date or are we?
That's a negative.
Okay.
They are so close. I went out there.
We're close, but.
I told Renee, I said, I need to get out there in case somebody asks, because I know somebody will. I went out there, they are, they are in the last phases of, you know, last minute plumbing, connecting sinks. The carpet or the flooring is there. I mean, that's gonna take a little, they're real close, but they.
Are we gonna make it for the first?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. We just won't make it for the 31st.
They were painting and everything the other day. I mean, yeah.
Yeah.
They'll have most of it done, I think, by the end of the week.
Okay.
But it's, it's, it's a lot of punch list type stuff. And I'm saying punch list, really not, but it, it looks like punch list stuff. But it's, it's cooling, you know, all the trim work's done. They're mainly working on false, you know, the, the top plumbing, yeah, some plumbing stuff.
And I'm pleased, I apologize, will it be painted? It's just gonna be gray?
Upside.
Yeah.
Look like all the other field houses.
So that was actually a question I had as far as the garnet, the garnet doors, the other field houses are garnet doors and a garnet top, like soffit fascia, right? So that is.
A lot of those doors is gonna have a name over them.
Right.
Is what.
Okay.
That's, that's the reason that hadn't been done yet.
I'm with you.
Now, all that'll be towards, you know, we, y'all have, Mr. Petty had to decide, you know, the pavers and all, you know, and. Mr. Duggar, Mr. Duggar's name especially by one of the concession.
He brought up pavers the other day, I was talking with Charlie out there. That's still another decision on what we've got to do when it gets to that point is how are you gonna? They can't finish in front of that field house like they want to until they figure out what's going with the pavers. How they're gonna attach or where they're gonna go. In the days, it was supposed to go right up to the track, but now they're gonna put down a new track, so what are the money we got for that? So now you, there's specifications that's gotta be met. So that's, that's a talk for another day, but just keep that locked.
And the thing is too, is, you know, pavers versus some signs, you know, did we, you know, do we want pavers? That was the original thing, was kind of doing like a legacy walk. Florida State had done that and I know Donnie and them had seen that. You gotta have a lot of pavers to, to cover that area. That, you know, you could put what's there for whoever's paid and of course, we've got all that stuff. Or we talked about even maybe putting some signs up, you know, where you can actually see them and you don't look down, they're actually up high. And maybe that encourages people maybe to give a little more or to have their sign with their name on it. So we're gonna look at both options, wrapping up.
Charlie the other day, before that garnet is supposed to be pavers, we talked about doing like Mr. Petty saying, signs, maybe get the gold plates with engraving on it.
Right.
And then space them out on that garnet, start in the middle and as people pay, work your way out. And those bronze, gold, whatever you want to call them, will look really good up there on that garnet.
It'll real, it'll stand out.
It'll really stand out, like Mr. Petty said, and talking about putting the signs. Because the pavers, and then you break the pavers, you know, something out in one of them signs, one of them bronze signs, you just take it off and put another one. I mean, that would really look good on that garnet. You know, they're gonna tarnish over time, but still, they look, that, that's a nice, be much easier on everybody. And, you know, when a new one gets paid, Jerome and Heath can go out and put it up. It ain't like something that you have to get a concrete guy to lay, you know, machinery there to put it on that wall.
I, I'm in favor for sure of what's gonna be the longest lasting, right, and the least maintenance. It's gonna look better, you know, longer, longer term.
Okay, so the softball field house, there's been some talk about, I've, I've heard that about the raising the bleachers. I just think about that money sitting there and I know we, we've got a time to spend it.
July 1 of '26.
Okay.
June 30th, so we got to June 30th, yes.
Okay, so we're looking at a little less, well, you know, a year. But if we're not moving forward with the other one, then can we get some quotes to see how much it'll cost? Or somebody go look at that thing and say, hey, it's gonna be structurally sound to raise these up? Cause I've heard everything from blocks to, you know, cement, whatever. So it, it, you know, just knowing that it's gonna be, it does, it's very hard to see over those. It's hard. But yeah, I'd love to see us moving forward and get that money spent and.
I know everybody's put so much on the football, we just tried to get.
I know, I know.
That's been the focus.
The gold bulldog, have we found out anything else? I know Donnie said he would do it.
So we.
Get any movement.
Yeah, we met, we met out there. One of the things, they're gonna have to tie a concrete apron from the track, so we gotta wait till the track's done. So it won't be done for this football season, but what we're gonna do is once the track's done, Chuck and George came out and jeered and we talked about that and they pulled some radiuses and looked. But that, they're gonna have to do, they're gonna do some pretty extensive work, gonna try to do some of the asphalt work and the drainage work maybe during football season when we got a couple of away games. They feel confident they can go in there and get that done and repurpose asphalt, because it kind of banks up a little bit. They can do that and then the, the, the track guy came over and just totally forgot his name. But anyway, he came over and so he, he said he can come in at the end of the football season and should have everything ready for track season. That's the.
Rubber or cork?
It's gonna be rubber, it'd be polyurethane rubber.
And it's gonna have, I was reading through some of the things, it's gotta go just to be on where you can have a state hill track meet.
Right, right.
It's crazy.
Coach Reba said another day that, that you're not gonna be able to drive on it or anything.
And one of the things he said at one, one school, I can't, was it Niceville? The boys come out to the field house and came across the track to get to the football field on Friday nights and ruined the track. They're clean.
There's gotta be a lot of.
So we gotta put some kind of mat down so when they come out and for the visitors, let's say they, let's say if they're housed at the old field, field house, that you got a mat there for them to be able to come out just for that.
No more homecoming, riding around, you know, you gotta think about all that.
It changes, it changes.
Please, please, what, I'm talking about, where are we at with the online forms?
Oh, you're gonna be so happy.
I sent out a parent square today to parents.
Did you?
Yeah. Yeah, we're good.
Are we up? We up?
Better tell Jenna, Jason, she is the best person ever.
I will recognize.
Little hiccup there, so.
She's been steady working on this, she's on the last form, the only thing people are gonna.
Awesome.
So I, I sent out a parent square and I put it on Facebook today.
Okay, good.
I put a couple of things, I mentioned the tax free, the whole month of August is tax free for school supplies and clothes. And then I put that and I, I put on, I said, y'all gonna really love this one. And so I think it's gonna be hit. So we, we informed parents and so what we'll do, is there gonna be kinks in it? Probably. So what we're gonna do is we're gonna try to get, as soon as, we hadn't rolled over into the new year yet for 20, in Focus. So we're still in the 24, 25, we have, there, there's a couple. You're still building schedules, then you'll, it's almost like you flip a switch, so to speak, and then you, you're in the 25, 26. We're gonna encourage, as soon as, the minute, the day that happens, we're gonna go ahead and tell parents, if you do have a Focus account, go ahead and, you can go ahead and do those forms right now. We'll have, we'll have assistance at all the open houses and I put this in my parent square today for, to help people who don't. We want everybody to have a Focus account. And if you don't or you need help with that, we'll have, we'll have resources there to help people get logged on and make sure they get. Yeah, I think it's gonna be a hit.
Yeah.
I know it is. You just click here and it signs your name for you or are you typing everything in or how does that?
Sign.
How does it work? You'll type it in if you have another kid in an auto fill. And then I believe next year, because you've already entered that information in, it'll auto fill everything.
Oh, that's.
Yeah.
Beautiful thing, just one last thing, don't forget the hospital grand opening on Thursday morning, I think it's, I believe it's at 10 o'clock. Yes, yes, so just encourage as many people from, from the district to come as possible and have a good showing from Liberty County sport. It's 10 o'clock, mm-hmm.
Our time.
Ten hour time, mm-hmm. Thank you, that's all I got.
So I got a question pertaining to the, the track. So when they reclaim the track, that's gonna be a perfect time to run conduit to the play clocks. If we can have that put on the agenda, because when they get out there September reclaim it all, you'll be able to trench straight through the reclaim, run a conduit line from where power's gonna be on both sides of the field and it'll be there set, ready for play clocks. We don't, we don't wanna have to bore it after we have a brand new track in that'd be 10 times the price of just doing a trench, if we can look at that.
Still got the battery rechargeable clocks?
Yeah, yeah, they're, they're closing, they're, they're close to their last leg just cause you move them around and shake them around so much and they drive them side by side, so something sooner than later, probably, we want to look at doing for the.
Well, I mean, they're about 10 years old and I mean, we paid, I think it was $8,000 for a clock.
Is that right?
Yeah, not, not the school board, as I say, we the.
Booster.
Booster club did.
Yeah, yeah, so they go in and out on us during the season. So it's, I think it's like we've had to repair them several times. It's probably a matter of time just because you take them up and they frame around. But if, if we could have a conduit run ready to pull power or whatever cable that might need to be used to connect it to the, the scoreboard, that'd be the opportune time to do it, as soon as they reclaim.
Power run too.
Well, hopefully the scoreboard.
Are you coming from there, behind the, behind the stadium or all the way up at the, at the clock? Yes.
Gotta be run from one clock to the other, I'm sure, to be in sync, don't it?
You know, I.
They got, no, they, they, they sync together.
Right.
As long as they got power, they, they'll sync, they.
Think the remote syncs from some kind of way.
They're, they're.
Like a wireless.
Wireless.
Radio.
Cohesive or something like that, what he said when I bought them, but one controller controlled both of them at the same time.
Power to both of them.
Yeah.
But I'd do a conduit big enough just in case, you gotta run something else through it. Right. Which I mean, I wouldn't do, we probably wouldn't do a really tiny one anyway, but just in case, you gotta put a couple wires, lines in there. Sorry.
You know? Is that all for you, Jody?
Yes, sir.
I thank everybody for working so hard this summer, appreciate you. And Kevin, I might've been asleep or something, but what's going on with the fence that toller down there, they taking it down? Did I miss something, I mean?
That's not me, that's Mr. Ricky.
And he's been out.
Everybody's asking.
Everybody's asking.
He's doing a little, some, one of y'all, might've been Jody, asked me, he's doing a, a kind of a reconfiguration down there with security.
I know, if you take it away, there's, takes away a lot of restrictions. And the gates are not locked, so if you don't have a fence there, then you don't have to lock the gates.
And he's, and he's fixing the gates where they will close, he's got money for that.
Oh, he took them down. He took all of them.
They ain't down, buddy.
The, the gates, the, the ones in, in the back.
Oh, not the back, I'm talking about we come, ones up front, all them automatically, all that's coming down.
Yeah. Cause the wall.
What we doing with it?
It serves as the stop and lock doors.
There's already fencing there. So we, we eliminated that years ago because the gates quit working and take the fence, if there's not a fence, then it takes restrictions away, stuff that you have to do by law. So you remove the fencing and then gate at the back, the gate at the gym's gonna stay there and he's putting a, he's putting a controller on it.
What, what, what are we doing with fence? I'm sorry, Dubby, I broke right on up in there. I've, I've been asked, I mean, I. Okay.
I'll, I'll find out, he and I, he and I have talked about.
Do we have to bid it off? Do we have to circle, I mean, what do we have to do is to consider?
It is.
What?
Specifically for fencing, is that?
Oh, okay, so it was part of a grant, so there may be some guidelines tied to that grant.
So I know he's talking about fencing in the buses, that's a new law and he might be gonna use some of it up here.
Okay.
Create a problem.
Yeah.
Getting in and out.
Well.
Better make it big enough. Of the 20 foot.
And, you know, talking about getting rid of it, what about the, all the buses and vehicles? Were we ever gonna do anything with them? The old stuff, remember I sent a letter, I'm at the list, all y'all, we gonna auction it all?
I thought we were selling them.
Yeah, I thought they were gonna be.
Y'all never made a decision what was, how we was gonna do it or what we was gonna do. We gonna seal bid, we gonna dub.com, they charged to do that.
I'd say the seal bid be.
They still bid, because I, I know there is some people interested in.
There is, but now probably none of it'll run. But anyhow, y'all have, all y'all have the list, I emailed, had emailed it to you.
Yeah, no, I.
I mean, we need to get, clean that place up.
I'll put out a seal bid thing for that this week.
I'm, I'm good with that, yeah, you're right.
If Ricky needs to get rid of the fence, you can do it at the same time.
Okay, I'm good.
Who?
Been a long summer. I know y'all worried your tails off and everything and I appreciate all you do. I want y'all to think about Jason tonight, he's had a little incident there, y'all. Y'all give him a little prayer tonight, he's, he's on a long road there, so.
He's having surgery Thursday.
I don't know how he's gonna make it till Thursday. It's pretty bad.
It's that bad, huh?
Done a spiral break on his, between his elbows.
On his humerus bone, the big bone in your bicep.
Arm wrestling.
Arm wrestling.
Yeah, say a prayer for him, like, that's the.
Yeah, pray for him, Michelle.
Michelle needs a prayer too, because she's gonna have to deal with him.
And saying that, and I'm sorry to interrupt, we are not, we're gonna postpone the fish fry.
I talked to.
Bless his heart, he, he told me this morning, he said, we can still do it, I, I can't go get any mullet, but I'll find somebody to get mullet. So I asked Jason, we good, we're all good. So I, I, Jason, we good. We're all good. Don't, just postpone it.
I did volunteer, me and Doobie on that, too.
Yeah. I know they do it all at their house and all that. He, this, this, and he said, let's do it. Let's just postpone it. And I said, that'll be fine. So we'll, we'll just postpone it. That was gonna be next Tuesday. So we'll, we'll reschedule.
Yeah, last thing, you know, football's fitting to be here. I know Jody's biting at the chomp to have that field house. I am too, cause you know, I gotta go see Kyle Rogers because he, he personally told me lie. July 31st, yes, sir. I gotta call him out on it. And then he can blame Kevin or somebody else. So, uh, but everybody's time for school and hope everything kicks off with a, with a bang. And I, I love this, being able to enroll online.
Oh, man. That's-
That's, I probably had numerous, uh, people in the community asked about it and-
Awesome.
That's gonna make it even better. I think it's gonna streamline. It gonna be a little hiccup, but it's, I'm sure it can be handled a lot easier than what it was before. No form, no nothing, we used to get. That's what they used to call it. No form, no nothing.
That's right.
Appreciate all y'all do.
Yeah.
You have to go to detention.
Yeah.
It's field pot. Three more days.
Outta here. I did not call your name.
Did not call your name.
She good. She got leaks.
Yeah.
Yes, that's exactly.
Some type of punishment.
Grass drift.
I closed the comments. Didn't have any?
Don't forget the breakfast. Sorry, Ms. Chair. Breakfast next week and I'll be sending out this again, um, breakfast next week on Tuesday. Staff return on Monday. We wanna give them that first day to get acclimated. Um, we've already done administrate, school administrator training. I wanna thank all my district staff that was a part of that. Um, we did again in teacher orientation, same group helped out with that. Uh, we got a good group, a crop of new teachers who are starting, very excited about that. Uh, many of them participated in the new, uh, the, uh, new stu, new teacher academy. Is that what it was called, Jeff? Over at T, uh, TCC or Dallas State College now, TSC. They were there yesterday and, uh, are they there today too? Yeah, a couple of days and tomorrow. So anyway, breakfast on Tuesday at the Civic Center. Um, if you would like to be a part of any cash donations for our, our drawings, we're gonna do our drawings. We got, give, uh, door prizes and stuff. Uh, if you'll just get Renee, um, and, and if you, if you don't want to, that's fine. If you can't or just haven't planned on that, that's fine. Don't feel obligated. But if you'd like to, just see her and we'll make sure, uh, you get recognized for that donation. Thank y'all.
Item 10, motion of adjournment. Ms. Ms. Jody, second?
Second.
Ms. Morris, meeting now adjourned.